Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Joint City Council, HRA, Planning Commission, and Human Rights Commission work session. It is March 15th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, and we are holding this as a virtual meeting via WebEx. So, welcome to everybody from all four of the groups and our outside presenters that are coming in to help us. And I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to Assistant Community Development Director, Kellman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Supple. Welcome, everyone. Just a quick introduction to let you know that Julie Urban and I are really excited to have you here tonight to hear this presentation. Julie and I are part of the city's CARES team, which is our racial equity team. We've been part of that for two years now, and we're really excited to bring forward a project that potentially allows us to do something more outward-facing with the community as opposed to all of the internal work that this team has been doing for the last couple of years. And then I just wanted to mention that, you know, racial covenants maybe are not familiar to everybody, but generally, planning and housing staff are familiar with them. We learned about them in school. So, we know they exist, and Julie and I and most of our team knows that they exist in the Twin Cities. But when we were building the new city hall, we went to plat the property. So, we combined some new parcels and created a new one. We pulled the title work, and there was a racial covenant on those properties. And, you know, in the abstract, knowing that these things exist, I think you look at them and you think, yeah, those were there, and there's been legislation, they're not enforceable anymore. But then you see it. You see it on property where you come to work every day, where you serve your community. And it's upsetting. It's really powerful to see it in writing. So, I'm really excited to bring Jared tonight to talk about the Just Deeds Project. We've got Jared Shepherd. He is with Hoffberry Attorneys and also Jamar Hardy with Edina Realty to help us learn about Just Deeds. So, I'll turn it over to Jared.
All right. Thank you, Melissa, and thank you to all of you who are in this joint work session tonight. I really appreciate that everyone's taking their time out of their evening and engaging in this conversation with us. Julie, I think she was gonna run my PowerPoint. All right. Thank you so much. All right. So, we're here tonight to talk about discriminatory covenants in Richfield and a new project called the Just Deeds Project. We're gonna do a couple of things. One, we'll introduce ourselves and explain why we're here in front of you. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about the project, a little bit about the history of discriminatory covenants for those, both members of the commissions and council that aren't aware, but also members of the public who are not aware. And then talk a little bit more about how the city can get involved. Next slide, Julie. So, I'll start and introduce myself. I am here before you, kind of wearing several hats. I am a Richfield resident. I've been here for seven years, proud East Sider. This is a picture of me and my wife Katie and our child Vivian. And we greatly enjoy living in Richfield, such an exciting, diverse community, and happy to be a part of it. And then I'm also here, so I'm here as a resident, but I'm also here as one of the founders of the Just Deeds Project. And what led me to that was I am a board member for the Minnesota Association of City Attorneys. As Melissa said, I currently work for Hoffberry Law Firm, and I am a municipal attorney, just like your esteemed attorney, Mary. And I represent several cities in the metro area and do litigation defense work for the League of Minnesota Cities. And so, that has brought me into this work as a city attorney and a member of MACA. I'm also the president-elect of the Richfield Road, rethrowing back on my local resident hat as well. And I'll turn it over to Jamar to introduce himself.
Yeah, and in onset, Jared did thank you guys for allowing us to be here. I echo those sentiments as well. Really appreciate you guys allowing us some space here to kind of take you through why just deeds exist and why it's really needed right now. To Jared's point, he's here wearing a few different hats, and so am I. And on the onset, I am a proud member of the Richfield Community Class of 1995. I also, after that, coached basketball at Richfield High School for nine years. So, very, very passionate about the community. I grew up since I was in fourth grade. But also, as a local real estate leader in the area, I do lead the Edina Realty 53rd and Lindell location, which, once upon a time, I think Richfield probably came this far north before things started getting built up around here. So, a lot of my agents, which I have 42 of them, do serve the Richfield community and surrounding communities here. I also, for Edina Realty, wear the hat of the Diversity and Inclusion Chair. So, I've been working on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Project with Edina Realty, which is 2,600 agents and another 350 employees, which we engage this project initiative back in like 2016, and I got in the leadership in 2015. So, definitely proud to be a part of this coalition along with Jared. And you'll find out who some of our organizational collaborators from the get-go are, Edina Realty Titles won. So, again, wearing the hat of a proud Richfield grad and community, I guess, member in the past, but also somebody that services the community, which is identifying opportunities for new homebuyers and sellers, I guess, if they're selling their property, to make sure we're bringing citizens to the area as well. So...
All right, Julie, could you go to the next slide, please? There we go. So, what is Just Deeds? Where did this come from? You know, last summer, at least in the city attorney community, among the City Attorneys Association and our board, we were talking about, you know, what can we do to look internally and talk about systemic racism and how it impacts our work and how can we better serve our communities? And as we started those conversations, we made connections with Mapping Prejudice, Kirsten Delagard. And also, at the time, the city of Golden Valley had just started, was in the early stages of a discriminatory covenant project. And all of those things were swirling around in our heads, and we were trying to figure out what to do. And we started conversations with Mapping Prejudice that led us to other interested individuals and organizations, including Edina Realty Title, Minneapolis Area Realtors. And we started to get on calls over the summer and figure out if there's a way that we could all work collaboratively in a project that would help acknowledge the history of systemic racism and really ultimately sort of operationalize the great work that Mapping Prejudice has done to shed to light discriminatory covenants in Hennepin County. And ultimately, where we came from was this unique collaborative project where we are coming together between cities and the real estate community. And of course, these are two entities or two constituents, if you will, that helped create this problem. Cities helped approve Platts with discriminatory covenants on it. Realtors promoted discriminatory covenant. Coming together in a way to cross-collaborate, to acknowledge this, and use what it is, a new statutory process to discharge the covenant. And that is one of the pieces of the project. Could you go to the next slide, please, Julie? So, the project goals are kind of listed on PowerPoint here. Educating Minnesotans about racist practices perpetrated by a variety of institutional actors, developers, real estate agents, lawyers, and local state and federal governments to establish segregated housing and keep wealth and opportunity away from communities of color. Educating Minnesotans so they understand who is directly and indirectly benefited from these practices and how these practices have shaped access to property, homeownership, and wealth over time. And then taking action to dismantle the racist systems that perpetuate the inequality and devoted resources to create equity for communities of color. That's a forward-thinking goal. And one of the ways we've, you know, envisioned this project, and the councilor and the commissions are probably aware of it, is the statutory discharge. In 2019, the legislature allowed for a process by which residents who have a discriminatory covenant on their title, they can register an affidavit, record an affidavit against the title of their property that essentially says, hey, today in this day and time, I recognize that this discriminatory covenant exists way back when in this document, and I think that practice is shameful and calls it out today. That practice, you know, hasn't been used much since it was enacted, as far as we know. But that is what we're, one of the things that we're asking cities to help get on board with. And the purpose of discharging covenant is not to pat ourselves on the back and go on with our day. The purpose is to acknowledge the history that occurred on the property and in the community. And Jamar's gonna talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so when we focus on the history, I think it really does start with the Homestead Act of 1862, which gave US citizens a chance to build wealth by purchasing over 160 acres of land for a small registration fee. So, basically, 10% of the land in the US was given away to US citizens by 1862 through 1934. And then obviously, some practices that kind of followed were just some of the zoning restrictions or the racial zoning that we see out there still to this day. And then if you look at the Federal Housing Administration in 1934, that's kind of where, you know, I feel like real estate really kind of perpetuated it a bit. There was just some things kind of around that time that really, for lack of better, highlighted systemic issues that exist even to this day. And one of the main ones that, you know, I think a lot of people have been kind of been talking about is just, you know, the Service Management Adjusting, the Service Management Adjusting Act, and them, you know, coming back and adjusting to civilian life back in 1944 with the GI Bill. And obviously, this was an opportunity for, you know, people serving in World War II to come back and get readjusted. But also, we noticed that the GI Bill really had some color lines in it that really kept African-Americans from taking advantage of some of those benefits, right? So, I think systemically, there's some things that we have on the screen that really got us here. But the big one, obviously, that we're talking about is just discriminatory covenants that existed and actually put into play during that time. And if we're looking at Minnesota, over 10 million acres of land was homesteaded. So, that gives you kind of a sense of about 20% of the states, you know, right off the bat, was homesteaded right away. You go to the next slide here. And when you talk about discriminatory covenants, you know, here's one right here, you know, just kind of going to, you know, no persons of any race other than Caucasian, racial use or occupy the building or any lot except that this covenant shall not prevent occupancy by domestic servants of a different race, and so on and so forth. So, this is what we're finding currently in deeds. This is also, you know, in 2019, what was highlighted by Governor Walz by signing that petition. So, these don't become a thing anymore, but we still feel like homeowners need to be educated, and their voices still need to be heard around, you know, what's in their actual deeds. If you can move forward, please. And again, just another of our findings, as you see here, you know, no persons of any race other than Aryan race shall use or occupy any building or any lots. So, we talk about discovering these, you know, I think if you looked at the founding organizations, a part of it, one of them was the Mapping for Prejudice. If you guys heard about that project, that really started highlighting these deeds specifically in Hennepin County. So, you know, I want to say on the onset, it's not just a Richfield or Minneapolis issue. It's a county thing that is actually spread to Ramsey County as well. And, you know, you'll see coming up here just kind of how that heat map looks. But at the end of the day, these are some things that were found once we started doing, once mapping started doing the project, and then once, you know, 2019 change happened from the bill that Governor Walz signed. You can go forward. And again, just another covenant that, you know, was pulled out of a deed. The party of the second part hereby agrees that the premise hereby, curvay shall not at any time be conveyed, mortgaged, or leased to any persons or persons of Chinese, Japanese, Moorish, Turkish, Negro, Mongolian, or African blood or descent, said restriction and covenant shall run. And it wasn't just a black and white issue, and that's the one thing we want to make sure we highlight while we're showing you these deeds. It's pretty much was, you know, for those who had access to build wealth early, they were protected. And I think when you look at the way our city is set up, some of the decisions that were made to even put highways in a certain way, it really perpetuated this redlining practice that, again, until the Fair Housing Act, which was 52 years ago, came into play, even us as real estate agents, we had to follow these lines. It was illegal for real estate agents to be able to integrate neighborhoods. That was actually in, you know, in real estate law, if you will. We could not be responsible as practitioners introducing somebody into an all-white neighborhood if they hit these covenants, right, if they were of these descents, if you will. So, we could lose our license. We could ultimately not have a career anymore. And, you know, back then, and this is why I'm passionate about being a broker and leader of color in my industry back then, it really was not a lot of leaders in our space or Realtors in our space of color because of this, right? How do you sell? How do you work within your community if really you were kind of limited on where you can sell within your community as well? So, move forward, please. How's this to me, too, Jared? Yep. And then histories of the racial restrictive covenants. You know, again, involved in response to the 1970 court ruling, that was the third, I guess, mandate to racial zoning. You just can kind of see along the lines on how this started to become a thing, encouraged by the federal government practicing and redlining and its underwriting and federal funding of home loans, which I could tell you from where I sit in real estate, it's something that still we see when it comes to how down payment assistance is given out and what areas actually get it. And for those that are low income, low to moderate income, kind of where they're able to get the assistance at, right? Sometimes it does push them in certain communities, like even North Minneapolis. They can't necessarily use some of those funds in other areas. Super proud of what Richfield has done with, they have allowed a pathway for renters to potentially purchase within the neighborhood by getting some assistance. To me, that is super smart. It's talking about affordable housing and actually using rental as a pathway to get into homeownership. But not every area has really adjusted to that, right? They've really just kind of followed whatever the lending practices were. And I could tell you to this day, if I'm a loan officer, loan originator, and I sit down with a potential client, and that client does not want to check on the box what, I guess, race they identify with, I am responsible by my practice laws to check that box for them, which, to me, really kind of, it's really bad, right? It really systemically just keeps the issue kind of going. So, I think there's a lot of different layers of this. But as you can see, you know, as we're going on here, some of those things were actually, we started having conversations about them, you know. You know, things became socially acceptable. And I started seeing communities change over a little bit, right? So, by 1955, discriminatory covenants were recorded against 2,300 properties in Hennepin County. And actually, again, just Hennepin County. And that's why I'm glad Mapping is doing the work that it's doing in the state of Minnesota and Ramsey County. They're just kind of flying through that right now. If you move forward. So, is there a play button on this one? Yeah. So, this is just a time lapse of the covenants.
But Jamar, I couldn't get it to work. It doesn't want to work. I can stop hearing this and pull up the website itself, if you want, or...
If it works better on the website, yes. I think the time lapse is...
It's kind of cool. Yeah, let me just, it'll take me a minute to switch what I'm sharing.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, this time lapse is actually from the mapping. I mean, it's on our site, Just Deeds site, but it was from mapping, right? They actually built this time lapse out, right?
That's right. They built the time lapse out based on all the research they did, and it's available on their website and also Just Deeds website, but it's the same map. And they just finished doing the research for Ramsey County, and then we'll be creating a similar map for Ramsey County as well.
So, can you see it now? Is that what you're seeing?
Yep, we can see it.
So, you can see Richfield down here.
Yep. And on the onset, I would like to say that for Mapping to be able to do this research has taken a lot of volunteers to step up and support them in the research, right? They don't have their own, I mean, they have a team, but it's a team of volunteers that are actually helping them aggregate this data and comb through these deeds to define, you know, this wording in there. So... And I love it how they had it by year. Yeah, I love it how they have it by year or two, just the way it was filed and when it was put in place. So, thank you for that.
Yep.
And I think the next, the next, the next slide, like I'm... Jared, I think it's you.
Yeah, I think it's back to me. So, just going back to what Jamar said a few minutes ago, is that, you know, the practice of discriminatory covenants started to take hold after racial zoning, which cities were engaging in, was struck down by the Supreme Court. So, this was the workaround, essentially. But cities, of course, were still involved in this practice. This is a plat from Richfield, and on the left-hand side, kind of buried in all this language, is another discriminatory covenant. So, the city of Richfield at the time, as, you know, everyone is aware, you know, is approving the plat and everything, including the discriminatory covenant in there. Next slide, Julie. And this is a map that, I can't remember if it was Melissa or Julie created, but the city staff created it. Of all the covenants here locally in Richfield, they're highlighted in purple. I think one thing that's interesting, or is that magenta? I don't know what color that is. But what's interesting is also on this map is the city-owned properties that have discriminatory covenants on the underlying parcels. So, if you see in the top right-hand corner, I believe that's Taft Park. If you see right in the middle of the map is Nature Center, one of the crown jewel of Richfield, as far as I'm concerned. And it is, the underlying parcels have discriminatory covenants on it. So, certainly, an entryway to a discussion with the community about, you know, who feels safe and comfortable in certain spaces, especially green spaces, you know, as the city has these conversations forward. But certainly, you know, affects people's ability to enjoy that wonderful, you know, nature setting, knowing the history behind those parcels. There are 3,714 discriminatory covenants in Richfield. And I think that number is very important, because when you look at Minneapolis, Minneapolis has 8,000 or so. So, we're almost half of that. And there's 22, as you saw on the map, there's 22, just over 22,000 covenants across Hennepin County. And our city has over 3,000, almost 4,000, and 26 are on city-owned parcels. Next slide, please. Just some important, because I'm a lawyer, some important legal milestones to talk about with respect to covenants. In the '40s, the NAACP launched a campaign against the covenants. Ultimately, covenant, ultimately culminating in the 1948 Shelley V Kramer ruling, which ruled that they were unenforceable, but not illegal. So, people continued to put them on properties up until 53 or 54. In 1953, here in Minnesota, they were prohibited by statute. And then in 1968 federally, the Fair Housing Act made them explicitly illegal. I think it's important to remember that Supreme Court rulings can be overchanged, and statutes and both state and federal can be amended. In 2019, the Minnesota Legislature passed a law that we have been talking about, allowing property owners to reject discriminatory covenants. That's Minnesota Statute 50718. And that is the discharge process within that statute. It gives a statutory form that property owners would record against the property. Again, kind of marking in time a pronouncement that acknowledges the covenant that has historically been on that property and explaining its repugnance. Next slide, please. And this is just a picture of Governor Walz and some of the sponsors of the bill, signing that bill. And I think it is to you, Jamar.
Yeah, so why covenants matter today, covenants divide our communities by race. These residential segregation patterns persist today. I know for us in real estate, just adding some color commentary, the hot-button issue has been a Newsday report that came out of the East Coast. So, cut out that New Jersey area where they essentially did a study, which, I mean, which they could do at any time. They could do secret shopper studies on us anytime. And what they saw was even some agents suggesting what areas were nice areas, suggesting what area somebody should move into. And then depending on the color of the potential home buyer, they were suggesting different areas. They weren't treating everybody fair, you know. So, I do think, you know, some people have gotten comfortable with those divides. Some people have gotten comfortable of why certain areas' house values are lower than other areas, even though they're miles apart. And what I mean by miles is under 10 miles apart. And when you look at the racial restrictions like covenants, you know, homeownership rates, you know, for blacks is really low. And that's been highlighted here in the state of Minnesota recently on a national scale. Even before, you know, the acts that happened, you know, in our city, I, you know, I really think that was something that everybody knew. We had a high homeownership rate here in the Twin Cities, probably one of the highest in the nation. But really, it was for whites, right? When you look at people of color, you know, we're highlighted as being kind of the worst cities for that. The obstacles, just to get into properties on homeownership for blacks just seems to be a little bit higher. So, you start thinking about some of those practices like FHA and some of the redline practices around there. It just does make it tough. And just if you look at understanding these racial exclusions, to me, it just, I really think, once we understand it and understand as a whole as a community, we can understand why some of these barriers exist for people of color. It's just some of the injustices that are out there for somebody to even think about owning a home being something that's fair for them. You can go forward. I think this is you, Jared.
All right, back to me. So, what are we asking of the city? So, Just Deeds is a project that is kind of rapidly evolving. We do have some suggestions on how the city can get engaged. At the outset, no formal action is required, but I think almost all the cities so far have adopted a formal resolution at the council. Um, at the outset, no formal action is required, but I think, um, almost all the cities so far have, uh, adopted a formal resolution at the council level. Um, recognizing the work of the Just Deeds project and, uh, to various degrees embracing the mission statement. Um, the mission statement I think is available in your packet. It's also available at justdeeds.org. Um, and some of the project goals I, I, uh, went over at the. At the beginning of this conversation, um, are part of that mission statement. Um, but what we're really asking for is the city to dig in and engage. Uh, commit to the, the mission statement and word in action, engage in community conversations about race and housing. How did this particular action of discriminatory covenants play out in this community? What's the story behind? Um, what happened here in Richfield? And I think that's really what kind of makes this project unique is that we're really asking each city. And each community to engage and look at how this practice played out within their community. Um, identify anti-racist action your city and community can take to address the housing barriers that still exist because of these practices. When we look at our community, when we look at Richfield, you could look at those covenants and, and, and it really, a, a, a lot of the, the homeownership. It, it is reflected today and where, where, uh, different communities, uh, live within our city. And engaging the city's Human Rights Commission, obviously, uh, Human Rights Commission members are on this call tonight, so I appreciate that. And also the city council. Um, another couple of other ideas that, that I've had. Uh, both for, for cities in general, but Richfield, you know, when we're talking about engaging in the history locally, work with our local Richfield Historical Society. Um, partner with Augsburg Park Library or Hennepin County Library, and, and they do such a wonderful job of. You know, having those displays at Augsburg Park that, that kind of each month, talk about certain issues. That's a good way to engage the community. Think about whether the city and the school district can collaborate, um, with respect to educating and acknowledging, um, this history. Another example, Golden Valley, as I said, you know, is a founding member and has been kind of a pilot project, uh, and, and really a leader. Um, on this issue and engaging with the mission statement and the ethos throughout their commissions and throughout their work. Um, this fall, a, a group of students from St. Olaf College for the Courageous Resistance Seminar. Um, collaborated with the Just Deeds Project and did a bunch of research on discriminatory covenants and their disparate impacts. Uh, both in Hennepin County as a whole, but, but specifically in Golden Valley, and they looked at, uh, transportation issues. Um, food desert issues, all of those things and how they connect in the back. And that conversation and eventually involved a presentation. To Golden Valley decision makers, just kind of like this work session we're having tonight, and that's another opportunity that the city could engage in. Um, to engage with, with, you know, local college students and learn and, and, and task them to, to help them learn more about the community. Next slide, please. And ultimately, we, we are asking the city to dedicate some resources to support the mission. Um, discharging the covenants, as we've talked about, is, is one of the, one of the primary methods of engaging in this project. Uh, but we certainly don't want it to be the only one. Um, for, for those twenty-six city-owned properties. Um, discharging those covenants on the city-owned property and discussing, um, how those got there, I, I think is a useful effort. Um, creating a, creating a spot on the city's webpage for residents to engage with the city. Um, to have the, the covenants discharged, and that's one of the, you know, one of the primary methods of our project, our primary, um. Uh, pieces of the project is helping cities get paired with pro bono volunteer attorneys who will then help the residents discharge these covenants. And again, it's an act of, of acknowledgement and education, and hopefully those residents will, will come out of the process more engaged in local decision-making. Um, to the benefit of the whole community. And join with other Just Eat cities and collaborate to create new equity tools tailored to city government. Work with the other, the cities that are involved and, and see what's working well there in terms of community conversations. Obviously, we, we want to make sure that if the city gets involved. Richfield really embraces the project. Community conversations are had, um, with our entire community. Um, and, and certainly the communities that have been affected by these practices. And that any, you know, policies or solutions are, are, are done with, um, you know, an engaged, inclusive and equity-minded, uh, mindset. Um, and be- before we get to questions, I just want to, uh, read a, a, a piece from Isabel Wilkerson. Um, from her new book, Pass, which I think kind of describes the moment that we're in here. And, and so kind of want to close the presentation with that. "We in the developed world are like homeowners who inherited a house on a piece of land that is beautiful on the outside, but whose soul is unstable loam and rock, heaving and contracting over generations. Cracks patched, but the deeper ruptures waved away for decades, centuries even. Many people may rightly say, 'I had nothing to do with how it all started. I had nothing to do with the sins of the past. My ancestors never attacked indigenous people, never owned slaves. And yes, not one of us was here when this house was built. Our immediate ancestors may have had nothing to do with it, but here we are, the current occupants of a property with stressed cracks and bowed walls and fissures built into the foundation. We are the heirs to whatever is right or wrong with it. We did not erect the uneven pillars or joists, but they are ours to deal with now. Any further deterioration is in fact on our hands." Next slide, Julie. And, and, and Jamar and I are here for questions, and here's some contact information for, um, you know, everyone on the call, but anyone who's, who's watching the calls well, how to interact with, uh, our project.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Hardy and Mr. Shepherd, for the work that you're doing and also for sharing it with us so that we can learn from it. Um, one of the things that we're going to be deciding tonight is if we are in support of moving forward with this and are in consensus. Then a resolution will, of support will be brought before the city council on April thirteenth. And then following passage of a resolution, information would, would be put on the city website. And a communications plan developed and implemented. In addition, staff would take steps to just discharge the covenants on the city-owned property. So if there are any questions or you want to express your support for this effort, we're going to open the floor up. Um, I can't see everybody. Oh, I guess now I can if we stop sharing. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. All right, Commissioner Sturza, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to give a little bit of background. Um, when I was on the Human Rights Commission, there was, um, a group, um, of human rights commissioners. And then also, uh, representatives from Augsburg Library, the Historical Society, and a few community members who, um, took up this charge and actually. Um, not just deeds, but the racial restrictions and, um, had a series planned for April of last year. Uh, with the, um, filmmaker behind, um, Jim Crow of the North. And then, um, the executive director of Mapping Prejudice, um, it was. All, uh, waylaid because of COVID, and I think that there is, um, hope that when, um, gathering is safer. That we will be able to, uh, reengage that effort, um, but I could not support the Just Deed effort, um, strong enough. Um, I think that it's really valuable to our community to understand how our neighborhoods were formed, that it's not just happenstance. That we have segregated neighborhoods. Um, I think my neighbors would be surprised to learn that they have, um, deeds with restrictions on them. I volunteered for Mapping Prejudice, and I think some of the language is pretty chilling, and anything that we could do to, um. Uh, help homeowners understand that language is still on their deed, um, I think is in the city's best interest and in our community's best interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese Daniels. You're muted.
There you go. Thank you, Chair Sepul. And thank you for the excellent presentation. I wholeheartedly agree and, um, am excited. That, um, we move forward with this to put this on our website, help get rid of it. I'm looking at Golden Valley's, um, website right now and how they are helping. Um, their community, uh, reject these deeds, and I think it just makes it really simple and easy, um, to get the community involved and getting rid of their covenants. So thank you.
Commissioner Glupka.
Yeah, hi. My name is Mark Glupka. I'm the, uh, chair of the Human Rights Commission currently. And I didn't know anything about this until like last week when I was asked to forward information about this meeting tonight. Um, but it's awful stuff. I can't believe it, and it needs to go away somehow, obviously. And, uh, the commission, the Human Rights Commission stands ready to partner with this effort, uh, in some way, and happy to do that.
Um, Commissioner Sandel.
Yeah. Okay, um, I'm a certified real property law specialist, so I've been aware of these things for a long time. Um, when I've examined title, I've seen them, and fortunately I was aware of the Supreme Court case, which allowed us to simply ignore them. Um, I do think there is a benefit, however, in, in following through with what Just Deeds is doing. Because they really aren't very, very negative for anyone who happens to look at their title and see, oh, my gosh. You know, I was, I was restricted from being in this house. Um, the other thing, I have a question of, and I don't know the answer because I've never researched it. Um, is I, my house is one of the houses that has the, has a restrictive covenant, and at least based on the map. And, but I also have a Torrance title where you have a certificate of title. And I don't know if the examiner of titles just does not allow that particular thing to be carried forward. I've never noticed it when I've looked at it. But it's been so long since I bought my house, I don't remember. And I just wondered if either of you gentlemen knew.
Um, so. Commissioner Sandel, I, thanks for the question. With Torrance property, um, two things. One. It carries over as far as we know. Um, I think there are some particular properties where it maybe hasn't, but by and large, I, I think the understanding is that it does carry over. Um, the process for discharging that is different. Um, it, it's simply sort of an email to the examiner of titles. Uh, to discharge the process versus recording that, um, affidavit or statement, um. From the statute against the property. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Makes it easier.
Commissioner Lavin.
Uh, yes, thank you for this presentation. It's been very interesting and, and, and forgive me for the naivety of this question, but is it possible? Excuse me, is it possible for Richfield to enact an ordinance that would require, when we have turnover on a property and a new mortgage being filed or a, uh, title being transferred? That these are stripped out, or is that, is that not a feasible, uh, approach? Um, you know, just as a, as a go-forward practice?
Well, I, I can't speak to, to that. I know you're, Mary's kitchen's not on the call tonight. She's your city attorney, and I'm not going to, you know, kind of engage into what the city could do. Um, but I will say, le- leaving legal advice aside, I will say, I, I, I think there's, uh, real, um. Efficacy in, in, in engaging with an individual resident about this. Um, because what we don't want to do, in my view, is, is kind of wholesale, get rid of these without acknowledging the history. Um, because we don't want to erase it. It happened, and it's why we have the communities shaped the way we do today and why we have so many of the problems that we have today. And we, we, we have to confront that legacy and interrogate it. And, and, and I think we, we really need to do that on an individual level as well as a, a, a city level.
I'll, I'll, I'll just throw in the process of, you know, for real estate agents, and at least the way I envisioned us engaging in this moving forward. As practitioners is to be able to bring it to a potential home buyer, or even somebody selling their property on the onset within our contracts, no different than we do things like predatory offender. Arbitration, so people can kind of go through their own experience and potentially go through Just Deeds website and, and figure this out on their own. And then hopefully their city has signed up to be a collaborator on this project, so they have somebody they can reach out to. Or at the, at, at the very least, that when they're, when they're closing at the closing table. That, you know, I know we got a realty title signed on to do it, and I think other title companies will, that will have that one-page document that they can make the decision there, so it gets filed properly for free.
Assistant Community Director, Palin.
It's a mouthful. Thank you, Chair Sepul. Um, I did want to mention also that Richfield has a point-of-sale program. And so we do inspections whenever anyone sells their home, and our intent is to start providing this information, along with the other point-of-sale information that you get when you're going through that inspection. So it won't necessarily say that you have one, but it will give you information to allow you to look it up. Um, and maybe get ahead of where, and then Jamar and his team would be able to help you actually discharge at that point, but we'd let you know, um, upfront that this is something you could look into.
And that would make the real estate agents feel really nice and really feel really good, because I know how they feel about point-of-sale inspections. So I'm saying that additional piece would be A-OK for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Quam.
Hi, well, thank you for all that information. Um, and I have so many questions, but I won't ask them all right to you, but, um. Okay, so the, the one is. Your hope is like that goal three is then to take some of this and try to apply it to other things where, like the current segregation, like that, that's got to tie into our current segregation. That's really an issue for opportunity. Is that the hope? Is that this will kind of dovetail into addressing unofficial, you know, redlining now? Um, that is such a problem. And what is, and then the only other thing I'll ask is what's the opposing? Side? And, oh, I think Minneapolis has an interactive map where you can click and see if your property has that, and maybe Richfield could do something like that, because people love to look up their own property. Okay, that's all. Can I answer any of those?
So my, uh, internet kind of cut out when Commissioner Quam was, was talking, but I think that was a kind of a question directed at us. Um, I, I think. And if I answer it, and I'm, I'm totally off-base as to what the question was, please tell me, but I, I think. What we're hoping is that both, um, both from the city level and then a resident level, this project. Um, will allow people just to be more educated about our history, and the more that we're educated about our history, the more we can learn from it and move forward in a positive way. So when you have staff and policymakers and, and residents all kind of having the same shared knowledge about what happened, I think you're going to get better positive policy outcomes in the future. Uh, to address those issues. And so, from our perspective as Just Deeds, you know, it, it's really almost a kind of a level one, educate, acknowledge. And then let's see what happens in our communities as we start to have these engaged conversations.
And just really quickly, what does the opposition say? Is, is there, yes, it does. What is, what is in opposition to this? The cost?
Um, I, I don't know that there's an, there's an opposition to it in, in my mind. I, I mean, I certainly. Um, I have heard someone say, uh, that it, you know, well, th- these are illegal anyway. What does it matter? And I think we've all addressed that, you know, many commissioners have already commented on that. Um, it does matter. It, it, it still tells you on your property who's welcome and who's not, who's welcome or who's not in your community. Um. I, I think there's another issue, or there's always been a concern about, hey, are we erasing history? Are we patting ourselves on a back, the back, and moving forward? In a way that makes white people feel good about what they did for, for systemic racism today, and, 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 and maybe they don't do anything tomorrow. Um, and that's why we want cities and we want residents to e- engage in this in a real thoughtful manner. Um, so that's not what we're cultivating at the community level, that we're cultivating an honest discussion. And that when people discharge the covenant, they're doing it thoughtfully, and they're doing it after acknowledging the history, and then hopefully. Um, they become passionate about this issue and continue to engage.
So Assistant Community Development Director, Palin, did you want to add something to that? I saw your hand go up.
Sure. I, I was just going to say that I think this is a great opportunity for us to explain what we mean or what is meant when people say systemic racism. I don't think a lot of people really understand what that means. They understand kind of what Jared, um, in his passage were saying is that I didn't build this house. They understand kind of what Jared and his passage were saying is that I didn't build this house. I didn't do this. I don't act that way. And this is a very clear illustration of how the, the systems, although this one is inherently racist, but some of the systems that are set up just function in ways that are hurtful to certain people and helpful to others. And I, I think that this is just a great conversation. So let's look at how our systems are working for some and not working for others. And then let us have other conversations. Let's start talking about what our zoning ordinance says and what that means to other, to certain people and not other people. So I think it's a great opener.
And I'll throw something in quick here too, just being kind of boots-on-the-ground approach at this. The opposition is, is that one owner or one house, like homeowner who hasn't sold their place, who potentially bought, understanding that these existed, and their voice have already been heard around this, right? Like they are kind of sticking to where they're at. They, they bought their property because the pathway was very clear for them to become a homeowner. And they care about, I guess, kind of who their neighbor is, right? I mean, that would be the opposition that I think we're, as Just Deeds, we're aware that that exists. So I also think the approach at not erasing it is very important. But obviously, not everybody's going to agree with this. And I think we understand that. But be able to start having the conversation, be able to actually have an action around, as we call, you know, many companies are calling it diversity, equity and inclusion space. I think this is an action plan that allows everybody to really tackle it from conversation, but actually put an action plan behind it.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Hayfod O'Leary and then Housing and redevelopment manager Urban.
I just wanted to say, I, I am supportive of us joining this effort. I think it is a really good thing. I also want to say, I'm really encouraged by what I just heard from both Commissioner Quam and Melissa Palman. I acknowledge that this, this will hopefully be the first step of many that in addition to this history that we have, there are really strong racial patterns and income patterns to the way housing is laid out in Richfield. And that is in part because of this history, but in large part because of the zoning code that we have on books today. So I hope that this is an important first step, but definitely, I think it's, it's good information for all of us. And I hope it will lead to many additional things as well.
Thank you. Manager Urban?
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Quam's comment about a map. So if you want to go back and explore on the Mapping Prejudice site, there is another map. And I think it's the same map, you just press a different tab and you can look at a property very specifically. I can't remember if you can enter an address. I don't think you can enter an address and go to it. I think you have to know where your property is. I've only used it to look up the one that exists on my church's property. And, and you can click on it and see what the actual language is. And so there is that function. And so we'll take a look at, you know, can we, we share that through our website? Or if there's a way for us to make our own version. Our GIS person is just an absolute phenomenon doing stuff. And so we can certainly talk to him. We might be able to make our own. But I would encourage you all to explore their website. And just when you go to that map, it's really fun to watch the time thing, but there's another tab that allows you to go specific. So.
Thank you. Do we have additional feedback from anyone? So I would like, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Glupka?
Yeah, I don't know if I missed this at the beginning, but why is it that we can't do something on a state level to just erase this stuff? Why we have to do it transaction by transaction to get rid of it? What's in the law that makes it that way? Anybody?
Well, it's kind of the, the nature of how property title works. These are all recorded individually against the property and, and housed at the county recorder. I also, you know, kind of going back to that idea of, of, of a blanket ordinance, you know, I, I, I think, I, I understand the impulse to have that. It's sort of a, you know, one-time thing. But I think that the, the discharge statute actually gives us a real great opportunity to have these conversations and for individuals to engage in this. You know, if you think about whether the, the state just kind of was able to just erase them all, then we wouldn't be having this conversation at a local level in a way that engages our residents. And, and hopefully kind of has some individual meaningful change with people and meaningful understanding, which again, hopefully will help create meaningful policy going forward.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Thanks. And, and I just wanted to add as a reminder, you know, city staff, we learned about this stuff in school. We knew about this. But then when it came up on the title work, where we came to work every day to work toward helping a community and we saw this, it was, it was shocking. It was, it was horrible. It felt horrible. And, and I, I sort of want our residents to, to see that and perhaps then take further action to just continue their journey. And I think seeing that on your property where you live, it makes a real difference.
This was made illegal in 1968. How is it that properties haven't turned over and gotten rid of this over time since then?
Right. When the property turns over, it doesn't go away.
Well, I'll just, I'll just chime in too. Thinking about people buying the property, when they buy the properties, they don't know this is even there. There's nothing at the closing table that walks them through the steps that this potentially could be there. That's why the mapping project actually exists. So really, it's kind of uncovering the, the very truth on a property that I guess we've been going through here and having a reckoning around that and getting it out. So homeowners are aware of this. That's kind of the first step. And that's why I love where we're at with Just Deeds, because now we're able to take that and put an action behind, even uncovering them. But for most homeowner, I mean, we're not as real estate practitioners having conversations about this with homeowners. Title companies aren't walking people through that at closings. I mean, the mortgage documents are probably the most important thing that, that they stepped them through. And they don't really go into this at all for a homeowner. So a lot of people don't know this even exists.
All right. Commissioner Rudolph, I see your hand up.
Yes, I was looking at the map and I noticed that, so like how, I really appreciate what you're doing. How would it happen where like we have a new development? So like Target and Home Depot were part of a new development where I see there's restrictive language there, but you know, wouldn't that have been caught when we made these plan unit developments? Whether by, I would assume they would have gotten a new language when they had all those properties merged together.
Um, so prior to 2019, when the legislature changed the law, there was no method by which to, to discharge it, if you will, from the property. And the, the way the nature of, of title works, and, and I, I do probably just enough to be dangerous, but in my day job, but it's all kind of buried. The history of, of the, of a property's title is, is kind of stacked on each, on itself, right? So, so the covenant would have happened in the early part of the 20th century. Maybe that happened by a deed, so within a transfer of, of the title to the property. Or maybe it happened in a covenant, as I showed you, you know, during the presentation, the, the, the plat had a covenant on the plat. So that was the plating of the neighborhood. So wasn't, it didn't, it flowed to all of the parcels within that neighborhood, but it wasn't on the individual document or deed for a particular property. And maybe Commissioner Sandal wants to add some commentary on this as well. But essentially, it's just kind of buried in the history and it stays there until in 2019, we allow this discharge, which doesn't really take away the document. It just says in 2021, if I'm an individual property owner, I am saying, I'm calling this out at this point in time and acknowledging that way back when, in, in this document that's on my title, we had this discriminatory covenant. And I'm saying that this is reprehensible on this day through this process. Does, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, I would like to say I also wholeheartedly support the Just Deeds project. And I'm, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we've, we're coming to some consensus that as a group, we want to move forward with this. So I'm going to see if there are any further questions. And then I'm going to ask staff to tell us what would be the next steps if we want to move forward. So are there any further questions? Commissioner Onisark?
So once somebody finds their property and realizes that there's a covenant on it, what are the exact steps or simple steps to remove that? What does that actually look like?
So if the, the city joins the project and, and particularly houses on their website, that opportunity for residents to engage with the city, what the project will do, we will find you a group of volunteer attorneys. And what kind of the staff involvement will be, they'll get their request from individual property owner. And, and then they will route that to one of the volunteer attorneys who then take it from there. And it's about an hour to two-hour kind of total process for that volunteer attorney. And it's just really a lot of back and forth between them and the property owner with respect to, you know, recording the document, getting the necessary document signed and then recorded. But that's how it happens. That's, that's what, how we've been doing it in Golden Valley and the other cities.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? All right. From this, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we've reached consensus that we would like to move forward with the Just Deeds project. So I was, if one of the staff could tell us what our next steps are?
Sure. Julie and I will work then to prepare a resolution to bring to the city council and likely the HRA as well, since some of the parcels that we own that have covenants on them are HRA parcels. So we'll bring a resolution of support to those bodies in April. And then work with Jared and his team to get things moving on our website and forums ready and get the program ready to roll out, probably early summer.
All right. Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Hardy and Mr. Shepherd and the whole Just Deeds organization and to all the staff and the commissioners. Are there any further questions? All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and we stand adjourned.